I don't think schools even in session.
Yeah.
July, so school's not even in session during that time.
I think so, right?
But there is a lot of camps that use that route.
This, yeah.
For the sports.
It looks like that one.
Hi. All right, thank you Fred.
Looks like that.
They have called them.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, but it's the campers, you know, where they rent their facilities.
Right.
See what it looks like?
Is it called something else?
Agenda notes, right? Or try agenda notice? Try agenda notes.
You know, front letter.
Oh, right, right.
That's where they go.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Thursday, May twenty-fifth. I apologize for the change of day for our meeting. It's about seven forty. We just came from executive session where we were discussing a fire service agreement with Porchester. The first item on our agenda, one that we look forward to for months every year, is the annual presentation of the MS four report.
It first did?
It first did.
Well, it's fascinating stuff.
Gonna scare off the new, our new employee.
Good evening members of the board, public. So yes, it is that time of year to discuss our MS four program, which is our municipal separate storm sewer system. We are required to report on our maintenance and our progress in, in multiple areas. And what we do under the MS four program is we have to inspect a number of our catch basins and our outfalls. We have approximately nine hundred eighty catch basins in the village. We clean them out about five hundred a year. We inspect them at the same time. We have a hundred and eight locations where the storm drains discharge into the brooks. Those get inspected each year as well. So there's a lot of field work that goes into it. We have reporting requirements where we have a street sweeper. We maintain our roads on an ongoing basis and sweep as required, as well as enforcement actions. We are required to investigate and follow up on any complaints of either dumping spillage, hazardous chemicals, improper chemicals into the brooks, waterways, anything from construction debris, meaning dirt and sediment going into the brooks, to even cases where we just recently had cloudy turbid water which was blue. And we had to backtrack, investigate what was the chemical, where did it come from, what was the source, eliminate the source and close out the spill, notify the Department of Environmental Conservation, Environmental Protection Agency, all the local authorities, and report on that annually. So I'm happy to say that we are in compliance as much as we can be in compliance and we follow the rules and we...
And they do, and they do check.
And they do check. They are, actually DEC is actually doing their annual audits. So every five years they do an audit, EPA does an audit as well. So we do get checked. We've been checked twice and we've had good results. Look forward to keeping it that way. So that's our program. We have a educational component online with information that talks about what's acceptable, what's not, what's not acceptable. People are urged not to throw their grass clippings down a storm drain. There are not to throw leaves down a storm drain. Definitely dog poop is not acceptable in the storm drain. We see that happen.
All the time.
There are mandates that are being discussed right now at the state level. And there are potentially other requirements that may come down the pipe. One of them is actual water sampling and testing at outfall locations. And that would basically encompass twenty percent of your outfalls being sampled every year. And if coliform bacteria is located, you must clean the system, track down the source. So there's additional expense, time, that would be associated with something like that. Right now it's not legislation, it's not a law, but there's discussion to have that happen. So there are big changes potentially in the future. So try to do our best.
I think we need a campaign.
That's your job. I enforce it, sorry.
Now, we, and we do do some public outreach too. We do, we do, we've done surveying over the years on the websites. We've done, provide, we were required to provide public education. Michael and I, you know, it's been a number of years, but we've gone to all the HOAs and met with them about the, about the, how you have to maintain, what's allowed, what's not allowed, to make sure that nothing gets into the, into the storm sewer system.
And our hydro associations do have an annual report, which each year they do submit that around this time of year. So, and it discusses their maintenance tactics. So HOA, the Arbers, Hidden Falls, all of these associations, Talcott, which have best management practices like retention ponds, parking lots, roadways, they have to meet basically just about the same standards that we have to meet.
And it's, a lot of it's just basic information too. You know, like people see the storm sewers in the street and don't know where they go. Where they're going more often than not is your neighbor's backyards. So that's where, you know, when you're putting something in it. Yeah, it just doesn't go, just doesn't disappear to the air when it goes in.
I didn't mean for you to do a campaign. And we have to think about posting on the local pages. And I think that I'm gonna look online and see if there's already, you know, why reinvent it? I'm sure other...
We have tons of information too, we can share.
We do, so I just think that we should copy post and do that because I'm sure there are many residents that are not aware, or if they are not aware yet, they should be made aware.
And we have our maps online and we have the resources available online. So our reports are posted online, our maps are online. So people can actually see and trace it out and see where these outfalls are. And as mentioned, a lot of these are in people's backyards. We've become friendly with these people and, and they become our partners. So when all of a sudden you see a milky waterway in your backyard, you're like, oh, where did that come from? Well, let's go find out.
And it's also why you don't want the, you know, your manicured grass or with fertilizers going straight into a brook. You know, you wanna be able to make sure there's a, an adequate buffer or fertilizer alternatives, things that are out there. But you wanna have like something on a riparian, like on the side of the stream to make sure that there's something to collect things as, as it's going towards, towards the brook area, help with the water quality.
There's a lot that goes into it.
And of course, if Netflix wants to do a documentary on store, municipal storm sewers, you know, we can give you a clip of the report.
I'm sure it would be thrilling.
Yeah, we can give you a clip of this, of this report, you'll be all set.
I would welcome Netflix to come and see. I'd welcome Netflix to come and see the life of Public Works.
I don't know.
It is very diverse and rewarding. It is very amusing. It's, but yes.
Wait a minute, we should at least share with them what we were, what was left one year in, in your leaf pile, the leaves.
The meat grinder.
Multiple things are left in our leaf piles. We found a meat grinder.
Yeah.
That you may have had on the kitchen table. That we found.
Railroad ties.
Railroad tie about that long. This year we found a few things as well. You surprise what's mixed into leaf piles, that's not supposed to be...
But some of the basic stuff that has to, you know, that gets into our storm system, that, that just everyday things that people don't think about. People wash off their, the paint, on the paintbrush, you know? And you're doing your driveway, that's running right down and going to your storm sewer, which is going into your neighbor's property. You know, those are the things we want people to start to make those connections on where it's going.
It doesn't just disappear.
It doesn't just disappear, yeah.
Right, and the dog poop, most importantly.
It does disappear and it does affect the ecology of the brook. It does affect the watershed. Unfortunately, things like washing out your paint can or a paintbrush in your driveway. Yes, it goes down your, I mean, goes down the curb line into a storm drain and off it goes.
Pools that get drained out.
You power wash your pool. All that milky chalky paint is getting washed out, things like that.
The pools, when the chlorine, you have to wait a certain number of days before you should empty out your pool so that it's dissipated.
Lot of rules. We try to maintain our watersheds.
Right.
So it's a project that we should take on also. So if you have that in things that I can post for you, I'm happy to do.
Yeah, we have plenty of information and we'll get you the links and, yeah, hundred percent we could get that out and do a campaign and inform the public because these rules change a lot. They're, they, they create, I don't wanna sound negative, but they create a lot of work when something happens and there's a lot of emphasis that goes into it when that call happens. Hey, the water is milky. Your day is shot by that point. You go, you drop what you're doing, you, and you start backtracking. It's intense what goes into it. You start cordoning off your manholes and your storm drains to find out where this is isolated. You're knocking on people's doors, you're going into backyards, you're checking your sewer maps, you're calling the DEC, and now you're calling the health department, you're meeting with them, what time documented. It, it's a lot.
Right.
And if it's a oil spill or a fuel spill, it's even more ramped up. Or if it's a sewage spill into a brook, it's the same heightened awareness. And it's, it's a lot of work and, which is fine, we're not afraid of work. Just, there's a lot of paperwork and responsibility.
It's just work that could be avoided with, with more knowledge about it.
A lot of it could be avoided by simple education.
There we go, and here we are.
Great.
Thank you.
I thought that we were going to a campaign against the additional mandates, that's what I meant.
No. No, 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 that is not mine.
So I apologize.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on, resolution number one, considering allowing use of village streets and waiving restricted hours for Netflix filming.
Whereas that's subject to the final approval of the Rodbrook Police Department, Netflix is authorized to use, utilize Lincoln Avenue for preparation for filming on July fifth, seventh, twelfth, and filming on July tenth, eleventh, and thirteenth, and restoration on July fourteenth and seventeenth, as stated in an email dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas the village code outlines a permissible hours of filming, indicating that the filming may only take place between the hours of seven and eleven PM, seven AM to eleven PM, Monday through Friday, and between the hours of nine AM to eleven PM on Saturdays. And whereas the application by Netflix for exterior filming utilizing Lincoln Avenue, July fifth, seventh, and twelfth, from six AM to six PM, July fifth and seventh and twelfth from six AM until filming on July thirteenth is complete for filming preparation. And on July tenth, eleventh, thirteenth for filming from five AM to eight PM on July tenth and eleventh, and three PM to five AM on July thirteenth, July fourteenth, and July seventeenth for restoration from six AM to six PM. And whereas Netflix has requested that the permissible hours of operation be extended to allow filming and associated operations on the dates listed on the application to accommodate the production needs. And whereas the village code provides that the village board may waive certain provisions for the filming code at their discretion, now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rodbrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the use of Lincoln Avenue for filming and associated operations and waives the filming restrictions with respect to hours of operation. And whereas the village clerk is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion second please?
I'm moved, second.
Um, I believe we have representatives of the, I don't know if you wanna say anything?
Only if you want us to.
Sure, tell us about it.
And in summary, while they're coming up, I'll just say, so the reason they're before the board is we do have very, we have very clear filming restrictions, but the two items are the use of the village streets and the hours of operation that are outside the normal quote hours. This is an isolated area in Upper King, this is upper Lincoln Avenue, mostly on purchased college property, but also going in by our, up to our compo site area. But our compo site would still have access throughout the event, so.
And I, I guess, you know, just one, I'm assuming that, um, that Bofamonte will be notified of when the roads are gonna be closed because they'll have to schedule.
Yep, and all the, they'll still have access at all times into the site.
Okay.
It's, it's just beyond their, their entrance.
I'll avoid, you know, going to the viewing station with my children those days.
You could go there. They'll be open up until there.
They love it there, they love, they love seeing it.
The airport, no, because there's gonna be a lot of action there, they have a lot of cameras.
Yeah, airport was also...
Okay.
We reached out to the airport, Barry Sermon, who's with the Film Commission in Westchester County, as well as John over at the airport itself. I've spoken to Anthony Bofamonte, I think he's away right now, so I owe him another phone call. I've reached out to the cerebral palsy center, that's also down at the corner.
Right.
I've notified them. And then, you know, Purchase will take care of all of their sort of inner workings with all of their summer camps and everything like that. So I think we've done the outreach, you know, we'll continue to update everybody as we get closer, you know, any weather, anything like that. As Sherry knows, I'm not afraid of an email, so I will email everybody, you know, as much as possible.
The handout that came today, is there anything that changed from the resolution we, we have before us? Because if there is, this would be the time to say that. Because the hours that are outlined in the resolution is our understanding of when you're looking to have a closure.
Let's see, five and...
Yeah, you mentioned eleven o'clock, this nothing says anything about eleven o'clock in the evening on here, I don't think.
That says nine PM.
Nine PM, right.
Yeah, I, so I guess on, on the filming...
Can we just, Chris, can we just make sure that the times?
These would be the most, the most current times. That the application that I sent Sherry is probably a bit out. This is like the most current dates with times. The six AM to six PM is what I've worked out with Lieutenant Arnold about what they want for preparation. And then these times are a little bit padded just based on what I've spoken.
So the times that are on this page is the most accurate.
Correct.
So just realize if the board approves that resolution with the times that are on this, you'll be restricted to those hours. So just wanna make sure it's clear, like you couldn't come back, you have to come back to the village board to modify the hours again.
Got it.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the, it's the most we know now.
Okay.
So if we have to change it, we'll have to, you know, come again before, before July.
Do we know who's in the movie? Do we know who's in the movie?
It's in the back.
The baby?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Robert De Niro, it's starring in it, he won't be at this late.
The one who just had the baby at seven days something?
Yeah, so it's his first major television role. Yeah, it's a good cast.
You wanna just give a very brief description of what you're doing in the Purchase College in terms of the scene?
Yeah, so we're filming essentially what is supposed to be a train hitting a car. Without giving too much away, essentially the crossbucks at an intersection fail and fail to close. So as a car is passing by, gets hit by a train, we are not bringing an actual train.
Gee, why not?
That would be really impressive.
So we're gonna practically film the crash using, you know, like a town car and then essentially what's a pickup truck rigged with a cow catcher to kind of hit it. It does like a barrel roll.
It's crazy, right?
Yeah. But yeah, it'll be cool. It'll be interesting and we really appreciate the help.
And then right on to municipal storm sewers, storm systems.
So again, as Chris pointed out, just if, you know, if there are changes to hours, you know, they would have to come before us again. So just, you know.
But they'd be restricted to the hours that are on this page.
Right now, it's...
We'll update it to reflect this page.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
If this is the most accurate, then we'll update it to...
As far as we know right now. Yeah. I think this covers us pretty good.
Okay. Great, any questions or comments from the board? Greg?
Thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, good luck with everything, hope it goes well. Resolution number two, considering approving use of village streets for the two thousand twenty-three annual Dylan J. Hoffman Memorial Ronald McDonald Event.
Whereas this, that's subject to the final... Whereas this, uh, that's subject to the final approval of, whoop, that's the same one, sorry. Okay. Now therefore be resolved that subject to the final approval of the Rybrook uh Police Department and the Porchester High School, the Autism Science Foundation is authorized to use the Village of Rybrook Streets for the two thousand twenty-three Dylan J. Hoffman Memorial Ronald McDonald Event on Sunday, October first, two thousand twenty-three, requested in a letter dated May fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And be it further resolved that the village street shall be used in compliance with the terms and conditions established by the Rybrook Police Department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved, second.
So it, from our conversation in executive session, it sounds like that it all's agreeable now, they're.
Yeah, for going to the high school over now.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, and we wish them the best of luck with that. Uh, resolution number three, considering fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget transfers.
It's that time of year, right?
Yes, it is.
This is all part of closing our books. So there's a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from uh to our central garage and fuel account. There's also fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to our central garage utilities account. Ten thousand and forty-nine dollars to our central garage repairs account. Uh, twenty-three thousand dollars for central garage fuel. Boy, central garage is really busy.
Yeah.
Nine thousand five hundred dollars for central garage utilities. Street lighting is another thirty. Uh, Board of Trustees for Community Events is fifteen seventy-five. Village Administrator's uh account is four thousand. Judgment and Claims, let's just see.
This number's a little, a little off here.
Which one?
The judgment and the tax part.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll clarify that, but I believe it's, uh, yeah, seventy-nine, four-twenty. Uh, Judgments and Claims, thirty-five hundred. Bonding expenses, fifty-six, sixty-eight, and sixty-three cents. Workers' comp, eighteen, thirty-one, and thirty-seven cents. And be it further resolved that the following fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three budget modifications are hereby approved. And that's a transfer from increasing interest earnings in the amount of sixty-two thousand and increasing the employee benefits, health insurance, in the same amount.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
So I just, um, you know, thank, yeah. The second came before the motion.
I clawed.
But Sal did, but Sal did say the, say the motion.
I was like, I just assumed, assumed it would do it. And then you was popping, I was like.
Being too fast today, so I let you just do it.
So, you know, I, I, well, thank you to Trish and everyone in the, in, you know, Finance Department, because this is not easy making it actually all add together and making it right. And we are heading into our next fiscal year in just a couple of days.
Yep, so this is a matter of just transferring uh balances between accounts. So the way our financial policies work, whenever, when we transfer within an account, we can do that, uh, there's an administrative process for that. But when we transfer balances to cover a, a negative amount from one account to another, it needs board approval.
Any questions, comments from the board?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering a modification to the Rybrook Comprehensive Financial Policy.
Whereas the village departments are always encouraged to receive multiple quotes and competitive pricing on all goods and services purchased. And whereas it's been, it's been over five years since the Rybrook Comprehensive Financial Policy has been amended. And whereas the prices for goods and services have increased significantly in recent years, making it more difficult to obtain quotes from vendors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby modifies the Comprehensive Financial Policy effective June first, two thousand twenty-three as follows. And it's increasing the purchase contracts requiring three verbal quotes between four thousand and five nine nine nine, or just under six thousand. And three written quotes from between six thousand and nineteen thousand. Anything over nineteen thousand requires bidding. Um, public, public works contracts, it's increasing it to between for three verbal quotes, also to the four thousand to five nine nine nine. And the written quotes from six thousand to thirty-four nine nine nine, again, over thirty-five thousand, it requires a bidding. Of course, state contract. And be it further resolved that the administrator and treasurer are authorized to make these corresponding modifications to the Village of Rybrook's Comprehensive Financial Policy effective June first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second?
So moved, second.
Chris, I know we've discussed this, but can you just give a little bit of background of why we're making these changes?
Yeah, these numbers haven't changed in, these changes have not happened in, in many years. Um, I was trying to look back and see, I know it's been over five, but it's been more than that. And um, so what we, this is, we always look for competitive pricing, as the board knows. So we're always gonna be looking for the best prices out there. But with the prices going up, um, a lot of, this is when you need written quotes or you need verbal quotes. Um, so these, we'd like to see those, we're recommending that these prices be increased because it's getting harder and harder for uh to, to obtain particularly uh either written or verbal quotes at the lower numbers. So for, at the current amount of two thousand dollars for a purchase contract, you know, if they, a vendor, we keep calling them and they, they never get the job because they're, you know, they, they, they stopped giving us quotes, really, be really blunt. And uh, so those numbers are small for smaller type items, particularly um as you look towards per, you know, pro- public works purchases and things like that. Or recreation, when they're doing things in the fields, you know, these items get very, um, these small items are hard to get multiple quotes for. So it becomes very tedious and the vendors start, they stop, stop listening to us at the smaller amounts and they don't want to provide it. So we know we're not gonna get the job, why are we gonna do that? So this will give us a little more flexibility, search out the, we still will search out the best pricing, we always do. But um where we get stuck, otherwise we have to write memos saying why we couldn't get three quotes, or we do uh mini bids where mini quotes, which we give them to a deadline. And if they don't reply, then we, then we at least document that we tried to outreach, stuff like that. So this will just give us more flexibility.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And we know this is definitely very, very much needed, so hopefully it'll help with the purchasing process. Resolution number five, considering approval of a request for an extension of the special permit approval for a temporary sell-on-wheels facility at nine sixty-five Anderson Hill Road.
Whereas on August eighth, the Board of Trustees approved a resolution granting special permit and site plan approval to construct a temporary sell-on-wheels, or known as a cow facility, at the former Doral Arrowood property. And whereas on August eighth, the resolution states the special permit shall expire, sorry, August eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the resolution states that the special permit shall expire one year from the date of the resolution. But extensions of up to one year may be granted by the Board of Trustees upon written requests submitted at least thirty days prior to the expiration date. And upon finding by the board that such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. And whereas site plan approval granted on August eighth, two thousand twenty-two resolution does not have a stated expiration date. And whereas the Board of Trustees is in receipt of a May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three letter from Snyder and Snyder on behalf of, of, of basically Verizon Wireless as the applicant requesting a one-year extension of the special permit. And whereas Verizon has secured a building permit to construct a permanent wireless facility on the rooftop of the building located at Four International Drive, co-located with other existing wireless facilities at that location, and seeks to allow the cow to remain until the permanent facility is operational. And whereas the Board of Trustees reviewed the particular circumstances involved and discussed the status of the construction with Verizon's representatives at a May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. And whereas the request for extension is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, and therefore no environmental review is required. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a one-year extension of the special permit approval granted by the board at its August eighth, two thousand twenty-two resolution for a temporary cow facility at the former Doral Arrowood property. And be it further resolved that the special permit shall expire on August eighth, two thousand twenty-four, if, if no further extensions are granted. And be it further resolved that if further extensions of the permit are requested, the applicant shall submit a written request at least thirty days prior to August eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at which time the Board of Trustees may extend the permit for additional periods up to one year if the Board of Trustees in its discretion finds that extension is warranted under the circumstances. And be it further resolved that all conditions of the August eighth, two thousand twenty-two resolution shall remain in effect for the duration of the special permit and any extensions granted therein.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second?
I'm moved, second.
All right, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, but Ms. Snyder, if you'd like to say.
I'm, I'm here if you have any questions and I'm ready to explain. You know, Verizon's done what they didn't.
Here, do you want to, sec-
Um, to assure that you, uh, Rybrook and uh the area around uh the Doral Arrowood will continue to have service. Verizon has put that sell-in wheels. Um, I, I have to tell you that I tell a lot of people that it's there. They don't, they pass it every day. They said, and they've even noticed that it was there, so, um, but we've put the sell-in wheels up. Uh, we've located a permanent site, just materials and timing and construction is just taking a lot more time these days to do anything. And that's why we asked for the extension.
Mm-hmm.
But we hope we have it done before next year for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I drive by it all the time and, and I know that it's there and I just have, I just don't notice it. So it's uh clearly not obtrusive at all. Any?
No, no, that was, that was.
Nope.
Very good, all right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and good luck getting the permanent facility in place. Resolution number six, considering the appointment of a senior office assistant office manager.
Now therefore be resolved that Jessica Tofa, am I pronouncing that right? Uh, of one forty-five Pythian Avenue, Hawthorne, New York, is hereby appointed to the senior, to the position of senior office assistant office manager with the Village of Rybrook on a provisional basis, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York in accordance with the offer letter dated May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And be it further resolved that the appointment is an official start date of June first, two thousand twenty-three, and the annual salary is fifty-three thousand dollars.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
So we are very thrilled to be filling this position. Lord knows, we could use the help.
Yes, we are very excited, uh, I recommend this highly. Um, we'll be working in Michael's no- office if she isn't scared away from the uh report that he gave earlier. Said, wow, is this boring. That's about as boring as it gets, believe me.
Actually, he thinks it's fascinating.
That's true. And uh, so, you know, we're very excited to have you start. We are definitely in need of help, so we look forward to having you join us in Rybrook.
Great, good luck.
And I would just say, yeah, welcome to the Village of Rybrook. I'm sure you're gonna find it great here, and uh, thank you so much. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Yeah.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And now it's official. Yay. Enjoy Memorial Day weekend. The hard work begins after. June first. Uh, resolution number seven. Considering designating the week of May twenty-first to twenty-seventh that we're in, two thousand twenty-three, as National Public Works Week and recognizing the Rybrook Public Works and Parks Department staff.
Whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Village of Rybrook. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, wastewater systems, the public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the Village of Rybrook to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas in the year two thousand, the year two thousand twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas the Village of Rybrook Public Works and Park Staff continue to provide professional and exemplary service for the residents of the Village of Rybrook and to maintain our parks, roads, and infrastructure to the highest level possible, given the resources. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the board of trustees hereby designate the week of May twenty-first to twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three as National Public Works Week. Be it further resolved, the mayor and the board hereby express its appreciation and dedic- to the dedicated Rybrooks Public Works and Park Staff, who continue to provide exemplary service to the Rybrook residents. And be it further resolved, the village urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, Chris. Could I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
I'm assuming the only reason we haven't done this before is we didn't know about it.
Yeah, well.
This and the next one, but is this?
The one afterwards we were, we were aware of, and we've done some things for in the past, but this was one that we were not aware of. Uh, and some little per- some little burden got in our ear and said, hey, you know what? We need to recognize this week, and he was right. So it's overdue. Um, we think we're trying to show, you know, we, we make a lot of effort, and Michael makes a lot of effort in his profession to really, you know, raise awareness. You know, things that people don't know that go on behind the scenes, you know, Michael teaches locally, he goes to college events, he goes to schools, he goes to conferences to talk about public works, you know, we, we've gone to pre- preschool in Ry- preschools in Rybrook where the kids get to, you know, get comfortable and see the trucks that they see going by in the street, and they find out what it's about and kind of go up and touch the trucks and feel, you know, see what these equipment do, and it raises awareness about the need for what they do, the value of what they do, the importance of that profession. So, you know, I know this is near and dear to Michael's heart and Michael Noak's heart in terms of, you know, how strongly he feels to help promote the profession and let people know kind of what's behind it, and there's a lot of people, dedicated people behind it. So, you know, we certainly know that our, our staff does a great job, you know, we have amazing public works uh employees and parks employees that will do anything for anybody, you know, they just really do go over and above uh normal, just everyday public works jobs. So we're very lucky, we're very appreciative for all they do, and it's nice to recognize them this week.
Absolutely, and, and it's true how great of a job they do. I mean, for those who don't know, it's basically what's keeping the village running and as far as the physical uh aspects of it, so. Um, just please tell me when you go to the schools, you don't bring Pigpen, right?
That's right. We did.
Um, but it, it, I mean, it, yeah, just the amount that the public works.
Although I have to say, one of my favorite pictures, if you go in Michael's office, you'll see on the back wall a picture of our loader on the ground with Michael on his, uh, sitting down with all the kids all lined up in the loader, all sitting in the bucket.
Oh, that's awesome.
It's very cute, yeah.
Very cool. All right, well, we thank, well, is this, does this repeat annually?
Michael, why don't you say that?
I mean, and also the resolution, are we, do we pass this every year?
We've never done it before.
And the week's almost over.
I know, well.
Wouldn't it have been if we were Tuesday?
So, good evening. Um, I'm gonna put on a different hat. As the president of the American Public Works Association, New York Metro Chapter, I thank you all for the resolution and the support. Uh, past president of the Westchester County Public Works Association and former president of the Southeast New York Chapter. Um, we thank you for all your support. Uh, the men and women of public works, um, work hard. Oftentimes, it is not a glorious job. They, they, they do what they have to do in the situations that are thrown at them, whether it's mo- mother nature, storms, um, issues with the sewers, you know, day in and day out, we're there. Um, and many of those people don't seek praise or gratitude out of it because we do what we love. Um, but their dedication is basically second to none, I will tell you. And as Mr. Barberry had mentioned, yes, I've had the opportunity to travel over to multiple municipalities and meet people, and you come to realize what people do with very little. We're fortunate in this part of the state, other parts of the state are not, but doesn't matter. Doesn't matter if they have a million-dollar budget or two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, they make it work and they love what they do. And that's what it comes down to. So the recognition is much appreciated, the support is much appreciated, and we thank you for everything that the board and members of the public do for the men and women of public works. Thank you.
You are appreciated, you know that's all.
Thank you.
My job is only one percent. It's, it's the people down at parks, at highway, it's the ones who wear the yellow and the orange. It's, it's the people down at parks, at highway, it's the ones who wear the yellow and the orange. They're the ones who make it happen every day. Um, I am blessed to have an amazing crew, um, as, as is any other public works, um, department. And they're the ones who come through. I mean, it's been said, they, they pull the strings, they make things happen when you think things can't get happened. They put their heads together, let's get the job done, and they got the creativity and the willpower to do it. So I thank every single one of them for doing what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, very well deserved. And another along a similar note, uh, resolution number eight, considering designating the week of May twenty-first to twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as Emergency Medical Services Week and recognizing the Portchester Ry, Rybrook Emergency Medical Service.
We have learned that the two groups need to get together, Michael. We, the two groups have to get together to figure out who's on which week. EMS and public works are the same week.
Competition here.
Whereas emergency medical services vi, is vital and essential public service. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty-five days a year. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and inj- or injury. And whereas EMS is an essential part of the healthcare system and provides important pre-hospital care to people in the community. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving, saving skills. And whereas the Portchester Ry, Rybrook EMS has served over, served our community since nineteen sixty-eight and provides superior EMS service with over six thousand annual calls and an average response time of less than six minutes. And whereas May twenty-first to twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three is the forty-ninth annual National EMS Week, with this year's theme of EMS where the emergency care begins. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees to hereby acknowledge the week of May twenty-first to twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as Emergency Medical Service Week and thank the Portchester Ry, Rybrook Emergency Ser- Medical Service for all their continued hard work, dedication and service to the Rybrook community.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
And I think we're all very, very much aware of what EMS does in our community and how lucky we are to have such a professional EMS service, uh, as part of our community. And, you know, and I think we've brought it up many times this past year, but EMS is not considered an essential service. And for those who don't know, Chris has done a tremendous amount in lobbying for EMS in New York State and beyond. And it's, and it's shown dividends, and it's the least that can be done for these highly professional people who are going out of their way and oftentimes under not the, as good circumstances as some of the unionized, um, or other union, uh, emergency services are.
The, uh, last, I just read the other day, two hundred and twenty-seven EMS agencies closed in the last ten years. Either closed, merged, or were taken over in New York State. That's incredible.
Yeah.
And what that means is you have less people covering greater distances to make the calls, and then with less hospitals around, going greater distance to get to a hospital. So those, those are things that should concern people. So we're, we're, I know locally, we, the board has been very supportive of coming in with like a multi-year plan to support, provide the necessary support to the EMS that serves Rybrook, Portchester and Ry City. And, uh, they're very appreciative of that. So, you know, we're in very good position locally, but this is a service that is in need of a lot of help. You know, statewide and nationally, both statewide and nationally.
All right, well, and, and I also thank the city of Ry and the Village of Portchester for being in this communal agreement with, with the three communities because it does provide us a higher level of EMS service within our communities than you have in other places in Westchester. Where we're not, we're not, you know, sh- shopping out for private EMS services. We're actually, um, putting the municipal funds into this so that we have this service for our residents. Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine, considering an extension of the fire protection agreement with Portchester for up to thirty days.
Whereas the current five-year fire protection agreement with Portchester expires June first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas representatives of the Village of Rybrook and Portchester have been negotiating and have agreed upon the terms of a successful agreement effective June first, two thousand twenty-three, subject to approval of the village boards and the fire department. And whereas the renewal process for a successful agreement requires public hearings in each village, which will necessitate the need for a short extension of the existing fire protection agreement. Now therefore is resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Rybrook hereby approved, approves an extension of the existing fire protection agreement, which is set to expire on June first, two thousand twenty-three, under the existing terms for up to an additional thirty days. And be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any written agreement necessary to effectuate this extension, subject to any language approved by village council.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second?
I move. Second.
Again, this is just making sure that we still have coverage. We are in agreement in terms with the Village of Portchester, but we have to hold a public hearing in order to, to ratify that agreement. And so this keeps us, this keeps the current agreement in place until such time as we can officially.
Until the necessary steps are complete to put the new agreement in place. But, but as the mayor said, we have reached, uh, the negotiating groups have reached, uh, agreement in, on the terms of a new agreement.
Right. So, and we, we thank the Village of Portchester for this and, of course, our firefighters, for all that they do to keep Rybrook safe. Greatly appreciated. And I still look at the pictures of our truck down in Portchester with the ladder fully extended.
That was, that was quite a sight.
The new.
No, the new one, at the, at the big fire.
At the big fire down in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was full, when the ladder was fully extended on, from the upper side.
Did you take a photo of that?
Yeah.
Did we get a mo, did I do a motion second?
I have.
No, we did not finish yet. We got a motion, but we didn't vote.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we had, I couldn't remember a second there.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. And related, resolution number ten, setting, considering setting a public hearing on an agreement with the Village of Portchester for fire protection services.
Whereas the board of trustees is considering enter into a renewal of a five-year fire protection agreement with the Village of Portchester, beginning June first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas the current five-year protection, fire protection agreement that expires on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three is being extended for an additional thirty days to complete the renewal process. Now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Rybrook shall hold a public hearing on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty P M. Villa Hall, nine thirty at King Street, Rybrook, New York, to consider a new fire protection agreement with the Village of Portchester.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
Second.
And again, we appreciate, uh, this agreement, making sure that, uh, the two communities are covered. Which is, which is great. It's great to be able to work with a, with a neighboring community on things like this. Questions, comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eleven, considering modifying license and fee schedule for police special duty assignments at the AJP Community Center.
Whereas fifth, the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget increases police special duty assignment hourly rate from one hundred and thirty an hour to one forty an hour on the license and fee schedule. And whereas the AJP Building Youth Fee Schedule section of the schedule also references the police rate when alcohol is being served, which was not included in the adopted budget. And whereas the village intends to keep this hourly rate the same for both types of police coverage assignments. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves modifying the license and fee schedule effective June first, two thousand twenty-three for the AJP Community Center's building use schedule as follows. Currently reads, if alcohol is served, applicant must pay a hundred and thirty dollars per hour for a police officer to be present. I see a typo there. And the new language would read, if alcohol is served, the applicant must pay the hourly rate for a minimum of three hours, referenced in this license and fee schedule for police special duty assignment so that a police officer is present.
Yeah, another change there.
Yep, that's the same thing.
And whoever caught this, very good catch because we, uh.
Not sure who did.
Yeah, I think it was intent, you know, the intention was there.
Yeah. I noticed we're changing it so we don't have to, we won't miss it going forward as that number changes. It's just gonna reference back to the other part of the.
Right.
Schedule.
Perfect. Perfect, so that we won't, right. All right. Um, any questions or comments?
Nope.
I guess we've covered a lot. We've covered EMS, fire, police, DPW, finance, we're covering all the departments today.
I think Liz picked it up, actually, because she was looking at the new rate, you know. All the departments are re, getting ready for the new rates for June first.
All right.
We need a motion, a second.
They booked a party.
No.
If they booked a party, I do have a question. Before the rates went up, do, what, what happened?
Well, I told Liz that anyone who had a signed contract, which should pay whatever it was at the time the contract was signed, any new contracts going forward is at the new rate.
Okay.
Motion second?
I move.
Second.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number twelve, considering reallocation and closing of capital projects accounts.
Now therefore be resolved that the following transfers between capital projects be hereby approved. This is the repair of the AJP retaining wall, uh, would, uh, and to the bucket truck in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that the remaining capital project balances be returned to the general fund and the projects be closed. That's the closing of the balance of the AJP retaining wall and also the reser, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars and the resurfacing of the basketball court at Garibaldi in the amount of three thousand. And be it further resolved that the capital project balances returned to the general fund be further committed to the unassigned fund balance to designated for capital projects fund balance. So that's an increase in the designated for capital projects fund balance in the amount of fifteen thousand and a decrease in the unassigned fund balance of the same amount. Be it further resolved that the following capital project be closed and the remaining balance be returned to the debt service reserve. That's the replacement of a pickup truck. Uh, there's a balance of, uh, let's see, ten dollars and nineteen cents, looks like. Um, and be it further resolved that the capital project balance returned to debt service reserve is modified as follows. There's an increase in the reserve for debt service in the amount of ten dollars and nineteen cents and unassigned fund balance in the same amount.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion second, please?
I move.
Second.
I just, you'll clean that up.
Yeah. I will.
All right. Um, again, just more end of year.
This is actually closing capital projects and putting into the reserves. So where we have, you, you, the auditors like to see a clean balance sheet. So if the projects are either whatever balances are left, you want to close the projects out. In this case, the one change I would just add, um, we have bid out twice the, uh, the bucket truck that we've been trying to get.
We're getting to that next.
Yeah, but in bidding it out twice, we're finding that the fifty thousand that was allocated was, seems to be short.
Right.
So in closing out the AJP retaining wall, which we can't do right now until the other projects are done at AJP, so we haven't proceeded with that project.
Right.
We're returning the money to the general fund, except for ten thousand, which we're adding on to the bucket truck budget.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Hopefully it'll work out. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Moving on, we're, we're good at segues.
Yeah. That's right.
Moving, moving on to resolution number thirteen, considering rejecting contract number twenty-three oh four used bucket truck for the Department of Public Works.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has solicited bids for contract twenty-three dash oh four used bucket truck for DPW. And whereas the bid was advertised in the Westmore News on April twenty-eighth and was a ma, also made available in the Empire State Purchasing Group bid system. And at ten A M. on Tuesday, May sixteenth, the bids were opened. We received one bid from Atlantic Truck Works in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. And whereas superintendent public works stated that Department of Public Works personnel tested the truck and determined that the truck does not meet the village's operational needs. And now be it further resolved that the board of trustees have determined the sole bidder, Atlantic Trucks Works, does not meet the requirements because the bid, the truck does not meet the village's operational needs. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second?
I move.
Second.
We'll keep trying, Michael. All right. We talked about one before, so.
Yep.
Can we just put a bucket on our fire truck?
I don't want to know how much that would cost. Yeah, we'll, we'll get there. I think it was a very good idea and concept, which is.
We're trying, yeah. We're just trying different ways.
Realizing it, but it'll, it'll.
So it's hard because when you do, in a bid environment, it's not like you're just going around and shopping for one. You know, you're, you have to bid it out there, you don't know what you're gonna get. If you go to a, these companies that have these trucks, you're not sure which they're gonna put in or if they're gonna put in multiple. And then when they are the lowest bid, you then have to go out and take a look and see, you know, what kind of truck is it? What kind of shape is it in? You know, is it mechanically sound? Is it, you know, is the, is the body sound? All the above, you know, it's gonna be used, so you don't expect it to be perfect, but it's gotta be in good enough shape that it's gonna last us for a while. So, um, that's what we did here, and we just weren't satisfied with the truck itself and would not meet our needs. So we recommend that it be rejected.
All right. Questions, comments?
Nope, we'll get it next time.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number fourteen, considering awarding contract number twenty-three oh five paving for Village of Rybrook Streets.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has solicited bids for contract twenty-three oh five paving for Village of Rybrook Streets. And whereas the bid for contract, for this contract was advertised in the Westmore News on May twelfth and was also made available in the Empire State Purchasing Group bid system. And at ten A M. on Monday, May twenty-second, all bids were received, were opened, as summarized below. Montesano Brothers was the, um, eight, nine hundred ninety-four thousand, eight forty-nine fifty. Lorelei Industries, eight four, was the low bidder at eight forty-eight, one fifteen. ELQ was nine twenty-four, two twenty-eight and twenty cents. Ry, Westchester Hills Landscaping was nine hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and six, sixteen dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees has determined the lowest responsible bidder meeting the requirements of the contract is Lorelei Industries of one thirty-six Park Lane, West Harrison, New York, for the total bid amount of eight forty-eight, one fifteen. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second?
I move.
So this, this seems to be more than we usually.
So, yeah, we have more money from, um, accumulated money from the past as well as, and we're crossing into next year's budget.
Great.
So, yeah, so this is also utilizing part of the money coming forward too, as of June first.
All right, great. And Michael, this is still going on with your schedule and what you?
Product.
Is it a mix?
Cause it's not on there at all.
It's in the bid details, but the bid is huge, so. But Michael can summarize what it is.
This contract is for milling and paving. Um, there are areas within the village which are too far gone for surface treatment.
Listing the streets, if you want to.
There's quite a bit of roads here, um, and they're focused in one area at the moment. Wilton Road from end to end, um, Bell Place, from Wilton Road up to the cul-de-sac, Wilton Circle, from Wilton Road to the cul-de-sac, Beacon Lane, from Wilton Road to Dead End. Milton Court, I'm sorry, Maple Court from Beacon to cul-de-sac, Lee Lane, from Pine Ridge to cul-de-sac. We have Terrace Court from Pine Ridge to cul-de-sac. Of, of Billis Place, there's a section that Con Edison, in doing their roadwork, is not restoring because they didn't do work in the area, so we're gonna pick that up, um, under this contract. We're doing Deer Run from Lincoln Avenue to the cul-de-sac, Brookside Way, from the bridge over the brook up to the cul-de-sac. We're doing the rear parking lot at the Village Hall. And we're doing a stretch of Betsy Brown from the Village Line up to Candy Lane. Um, so that's where we are with this contract. Quite a bit of paving, about three thousand eight hundred tons of blacktop. So it's a lot of blacktop.
A lot of work. But the prices came in pretty tight. You know, if you look at it, the spread was very, was, looks reasonable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Huh? What is that?
Under the contract, there are two alternates, uh, for extensions for two additional years. Lorelei Industries did express interest in extending the contract. Lorelei Industries did express interest in extending the contract. The contract does have escalation under the New York State contract provisions, so, um, I would like. For the board to consider those extensions, they're mutual extensions. So if the village wishes to not extend, we do not have to at a later time.
Okay.
So we could do that later? Do the extensions later?
I'd rather see him now.
We need, we need to know what they are though, do you have a cop, you wanna grab the bid, or a look, do you know what the two, huh?
It's in there.
It's not in the resolution, that's why I'm asking.
Alright, hold on.
Let me look at the bid itself.
It's extra two years.
As long as, they've gotta be the lowest responsible bidder, so they have to be somebody who meets this back.
Who can prove that they can, they can prove that they can do the work.
They've never worked here, but we've checked references with other municipalities. Oh, you have? Oh, yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, they're doing a dam project for.
Yeah, the first time they've been, there's two, the other one, Westchester Hills, we haven't had them either in the.
So on page number twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Of the bid, there's add alternate A and add alternate B. Add alternate A is contract acknowledges and mutually agrees to hold contract, uh, pricing for one additional fiscal year beginning June. Twenty, twenty-four to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five escalation for asphalt is permitted based on New York State escalation clause attached herein. And alternate B is the same, but from June twenty-five to May thirty-first of twenty-six.
And is that, is the escalation in the bid?
It's in the bid.
What is the escalation?
It's based on the procurement index of oil.
So at the time?
It's a New York State procurement policies, uh, standard escalation.
Okay.
And if it's within fifteen dollars per ton, then there's no change in price.
So the question is, does the board wanna add in alternate A and B, uh, approving that as part of the resolution?
So this does not necessar, this does not bind us to the extension.
It does. Yeah, it does on our end though, right? Does the agreement require us to take another action later on?
No, don't believe so.
So if they approve A and B tonight, they'd be approving it for the next three years.
For next two additional years.
With no out?
But at the price schedules that are today, today's price, price amounts. Yeah.
Do we think that, I mean, I'm assuming prices aren't gonna go down?
Changes every day, and that's the, uh, and that's the gamble, okay, what this would do is this would save. Us time from rebidding this contract again next year to year after. This is what's done with other municipalities, North Castle does their contract the same way, the Village of, of Scarsdale does the same thing.
So the question is, how much of the rates gone up or down the last couple of years?
They change daily, that's the problem.
So what, you're recommending that we, that the board consider A and B, I'm asking, so why do you say why you believe that that's a good? Uh, other than the time, cuz obviously we're talking about a big contract. Um, what would you, what are the, what, you looked at the bid, you looked at the numbers, why you recommend that those A and B be approved? Do you find that the price is fair, do you find them within range of what they've been?
The, the prices that are in here are within reason compared to other municipalities. They are slightly higher than what other municipalities have gotten. Within the last eight months, okay, so from eight months ago, the price has changed about fifteen, twenty dollars a ton. Okay, plus, so.
So you think it's only gonna escalate?
So the, and also as a question, I mean, how does.
May go down.
I mean, the, the price per road mile, whatever, I don't know what you exactly base it on, but.
What happens is the price of asphalt is based on the oil index. So if the oil index goes down, the price of a ton of asphalt will go down, so the prices get adjusted accordingly.
And how about the labor, how does the labor work on the extension?
Labor actually gets increased every year cuz prevailing wage is a.
It'll be a prevailing wage.
Right.
So that's a guaranteed increase, that's usually anywhere from twenty-five to seventy-five, a cent a dollar.
An hour.
Yeah.
So it's, but.
Bless you.
Bless you. How do, but how does this price?
The board approve, accepting the alternates.
Per, you know, distance of road compared to previous years and what we've done.
About the same.
About the same.
We have paid that a hundred and five dollars a ton.
Right.
We've paid as high as a hundred and fifty dollars a ton.
Right. Chris?
Huh, I, I, I wanna wait, we're looking at the language, we just wanna see what the language says in there, cuz we're.
Whether we're bound to.
Benefit would be to say that we accept the bid, uh, with A and B.
With an option.
Uh, with the village's ability to, um, mutually agree at a later, at a date prior, you know, a couple of months from now. Gives us time to look at a little bit more.
Right.
But I, we're just wanna make sure the language reads that way.
Yeah, that, that we're not.
Cuz we're accepting the bid with A and B, but we still have a few months to decide whether or not to mutually agree. Okay, let's hold on for a sec on that.
Yeah.
You wanna go to the other two items?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we come back? Alright, um, so for now, we are gonna move on to resolution number fifteen. Considering accepting a donation from Julia B. Fee Sotheby's International Realty. To the Friends of Rybrook for sponsorship of the music in the park concert series.
Whereas the village has received an email dated May eighth, two thousand twenty-three from Allison Cunningham, marketing manager for Julia B. Fee Sotheby's International Realty. Offering a donation of forty-five hundred dollars to the Friends of Rybrook to sponsor the village, villages music in the park concert series. And whereas the village of Rybrook is interested in accepting this donation. Now therefore be resolved that Rybrook hereby accepts the donation of forty-five hundred dollars. From Julia B. Fee Sotheby's International Realty for sponsorship of the music in the park concert series.
Thank you, can I have a motion, a second please?
Go move.
Second.
Alright, well, we certainly appreciate, uh, the sponsorship of our concert series. And we thank Julia B. Fee Sotheby's International for helping us out with this.
And trusty Epstein, and trusty Epstein for helping, uh.
Negotiate, yeah.
And I would like to also.
Doing such a successful music program.
Otis Marshall Rogal, um, who was, uh, very important in getting this done. And, uh, two of the people that work for Sotheby's moved into Rybrook also.
Ah, there we go.
So, uh, they're more than happy to take part in it, so we're happy to have them and welcome them with open arms, thank you.
Alright.
And in the resolution, we're just gonna modify the language a little bit by just saying the board of trustees acting as the friends of the village of Rybrook.
Right.
Friends of Rybrook.
Yep.
And also Susan, what are those dates again?
Uh, the first concert is June twenty-eighth, a Wednesday, with a June, uh, twenty-ninth, uh, rain date, which is like, that's a problem for me. And then, I won't be there, um, and then the next concert is July nineteenth. And the one after that, I believe, is August, did I say ninth? But we're negotiating more, we'll have at least five this year.
Great.
Great.
So we're sending a blast email out with that, Chris, or something?
Yes, oh no, we'll be sending information out.
Yeah, there'll be information available to the community in many different ways.
This.
Save the date.
Alright.
Alright, good. Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, are we moving back or?
I'll, I'll go through the administrative report. Just have several quick items, so the library book sale was held, uh, to support the library at AJP last weekend. They raised about twenty-six, a little over twenty-six hundred dollars, uh, for the library, which was a, a nice event. And they were very appreciative of Rybrook providing the space and, you know, Liz volunteering her time to, to organize the event and do a great job there. Um, spring tag sale was just held, and Greg Rivera was coordinating that program. We had over thirty participants, which was wonderful. Uh, unfortunately, the Saturday date was a rainy day, so we, we moved it to Sunday, which we think hurt attendance a little bit. But at the same time, I think it's pretty strong that you hear thirty people signed up for, over thirty families signed up for it, uh, which was very nice. Again, uh, we talked about, but Rybrook birthday is on June seventeenth, it's right around the corner, I can't believe it's gonna be mid-June soon. Um, June twenty-eighth, we mentioned is the, um, prior, is, just prior to, is gonna be our, one of our concerts, that's the first concert. And prior to that, we're gonna have an ice cream Sunday, uh, event for all the boards, commissions, committee. Who volun, all the members who volunteer, so a little thank you to them, to, uh, for, for all the, all the volunteering and dedication that they do. Uh, July nineteenth is also gonna be a concert night, and prior to that event, we're gonna have, um, we, we, we're excited about. It's an opportunity to recognize all the community volunteers that helped during, through COVID and Hurricane Ida. There's so many people that did that, so there's an opportunity for people to nominate people in the community or outside the community that helped Rybrook residents. Um, during those two events, and, uh, it's a type, nice way to recognize them, thank them. But also, we're gonna have a little barbecue prior to the concert, where they can come and have some food set up for them. And it'll be a nicer way to kinda thank those that did that, and we'll have certificates for them, and it'd be a nice event. Um, just had a nice chamber event at Fortina, and that was nice, so it was, thank you everybody for, for everyone coming out on that. And the Chamber's been doing a great job and really involving Rybrook, so, you know, Sylvia Dundan does a great job organizing those events. And, you know, Rybrook has really, they've really stepped up the Rybrook representation with all the Chamber and all those events. Um, thanks again to EMS and Public Works, you know, we're, uh, all do such a great job. And it's, you know, they often, as we say, are unrecognized, so thank you for all the work that they do. Uh, and just, uh, the quick thank you to some of our police officers that are retiring. In particular Richie Carroll, Richard Carroll, after, what, he started nineteen eighty-eight? Thirty-five years, eighty-eight, is that right? That's incredible, you know, and he's, he's, you know, anybody that called, and he was on the desk, and everybody knows his voice. He, but he instills a nice sense of calm for people, he's got a great personality when people call, and he. He really does a great job for the police department for all those years, so he's gonna be missed for sure. And Rodney Tudor is another, uh, police officer, how many years? Twenty-two years, so those are. So also, another, another great officer who's been with us and helped us so much throughout the years, serving the community with all, you know, with such dedication. So really, we're very lucky here, so congratulations to both of them, that's a lot of years of experience that are leaving. Um, there might be one other, but we're, we'll, we'll wait and see and hope that, uh, that, that, uh, he'll stay on a little longer. But we'll, we'll find out, but we'll recognize another time if he does. Um, so just a quick thank you to them, it's a, they've had some great careers here serving the community of Rybrook.
Okay, so I had a chance to look through the, the bid documents, if everybody's ready for me to report on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, there is no termination provision just for convenience. Uh, in, in the, in the bid documents, that doesn't mean that a, a contract can't be neg, a contract provision can't be negotiated. Between the village and the successful bidder that has some sort of a termination provision. My suggestion, because the bid documents in, indicate that the bid is, um, is a firm bid. And shall remain, uh, in effect for a period of at least forty-five days from the bid opening, and I think the bid opening was just a few days ago. So if you wanna approve the, the base bid tonight, go ahead and approve the base bid. We have forty-five days to have a discussion with the vendor about add alternate A and B. And then figure out how we wanna navigate, and we can come back at the next meeting.
Great.
Perfect, so we'll just, we'll approve the base bid.
As, as.
As is, alright, resolution as written, so we don't need another motion, so we already have that. And then what we'll do is, we either at our, either at the first or second meeting in June. Um, we'll, we'll, I guess from bid opening, probably have to be the first meeting in June.
Yep.
Um, well, no, if it's just open.
We'll, we'll take care of it, we'll look at the schedule and make sure.
First or second meeting in June, we may be adding on the, eh, the extension as an option that we're not locked into.
You can consider that at a later date.
Okay, great, sound good to everyone?
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for doing that really quickly, Ralph.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate it.
Of course.
Sorry, go ahead. And I, I did, for, part of the administrative report, I did wanna say to thank Greg for coming down and organizing that tag sale event. And putting out the maps and everything else, it's, he does a lot of work with that, it came down on Sunday, so thank you so much. You, I think you hit almost every home.
Find anything?
And then went over to AJP to, I think, check out the book sale too, so. And again, Liz for doing such a great job at the library too, thank you to Liz.
Oh, we appreciate it, Greg, thank you very much. I unfortunately couldn't attend because I had to be out of town.
I was fishing.
For, for, I had to be out of town for an event for my son, so, um, but, and, um.
Huh?
Thank you all, and the next, um, and I think this is actually wrong on the bottom here. The next meetings of the board of trustees will be June thirteenth and twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh is a Wednesday, uh, Tuesday.
This should be Tuesdays.
The night before the concert.
Right. Is that correct? One second, let me look quickly at my calendar here. It would be June thirteenth and twenty-seventh are the next meetings, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.